Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
We'll call the Daily City Library Board of Trustees Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, meeting to order. Everyone, please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we have a roll call.
Absolutely. Full house tonight.
I know.
Trusty Devera?
Present.
Trusty Louis?
Present.
Trusty Logarta?
Present.
Vice President Chubunka?
Present.
President Lex?
Here. Thank you. For those who have had a chance to look at the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I would also entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 17th.
All approved to minutes.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 17th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific. Okay, Joseph, I think you're up.
On to the director's board. As you recall, a month ago, there was a request, I believe, of President Lex, it might have been Trusty Logarta, to update about the Wells Fargo grant. So since then, the first check for $2,500 did arrive right after our last meeting. We accepted it and appropriated it at the last regular city council meeting. So $1,250 was set aside for materials in the library and $1,250 towards the Phil Am Festival that happened on October 14th.
Right.
We are expecting a second $2,500 grant and we'll let you know as soon as that one comes.
Great.
Okay.
Any questions about that?
Yes, you said materials. Can you be any more specific about the library purchases?
No, you know, likely books. I mean, if you're...
I have an update.
Sure.
Okay, I spoke to Joshua Reeves, our cataloguer today, and he's refreshing our encyclopedia collection, so it's a recurring expense and very expensive, obviously, so we're getting new world books for our branches.
There you go. You heard her here first.
Thank you.
Well, keep your mic on, because I'm just curious. You know, today with the abundance of reference material that's so easily accessible, I'm not objecting, I'm just curious about why are we investing in what's really old, traditional reference technology?
I think one challenge is that many of our patrons don't have the equipment at home, so sometimes they can download that information in the library and print it out. It can be a challenge. Frequently, we'll give them articles for free, but we're, you know, we're supposed to charge per page, so often they can check out the older editions and take it home and read them at their leisure, and the newer editions remain in the library to be used in the library, so it's another option. I also read a report recently that with all the adoption of eBooks, 25% of readers prefer or use eBooks, so it's still the majority, 75% of people prefer print.
Right.
And it does give them that research skill to come into the library and get a printed book, because a lot of the teachers are resistant to the idea of going on the Internet, even if it is an authoritative resource that we purchase, they want them to have the experience of that traditional means of research.
Great, okay, well, that makes sense. Do we monitor the usage at all to know whether or not, you know, people are actually checking them out and getting, making good use of what we've got?
We do. So for the electronic resources, those are all tracked, the number of visits, the articles that are downloaded is also tracked. As far as the newest editions that are used in the library, those are counted as in-house use, so they're not taken out of the library, but they're scanned at each use, so that we have an internal statistic. And then the older ones are tracked in the traditional means of checked out, a number of checkouts and renewals, so we can look at it in that way.
That's great. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, what, you said that the materials are pretty dated. What do you mean by dated, like 10 years old or?
They're on a replacement cycle, so the ceremony at the main library gets the newest one, and then we send the older versions, the older editions to the other branches. Josh could talk a little bit more about the details of that, but we have a system where the newest ones are at our main library, then they go off to the other branches and eventually are removed from the library. Some of them are a few years old. I think we keep the last three editions, so at that point, after three years or so, we have to look at the accuracy of materials. Maybe there's been, you know, a political coup of some type and, you know, the regime has changed, that information is outdated, or maybe there's been a discovery in the fossil records, so our understanding of dinosaurs has changed. So with something like that, it's important to replace the whole volume, because it will, all the entries will be updated and reflect the latest understanding of the world. But the ones we keep on the shelf are no more than three years old.
Okay, so typically, it's a recurring cost every three years?
It's a recurring cost. They come out with a new edition every year, and we don't buy the new edition for every branch. We sort of, I think we're even skipping a year, so it's not something we do every year. If we have the ability and we can replace it, it's really nice. They're becoming more expensive as the demand goes down, you know, the numbers that are being produced. And that kind of material is very expensive to access as an electronic resource, because it is more cost-effective to buy it and offer it and print than it is to pay several multiples of what the print edition is, to offer it as an electronic resource. So it makes sense for us to continue to offer in that way, especially as our users have not totally adopted home Internet and computing and the ability to access it home.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to, again, express our thanks to Wells Fargo. You know, those of you who've been around a few years, between 2014 and 2016, the library's budget was really trimmed way back, and the area that got hit the hardest was materials. So Josh is very appreciative. Anytime we can cobble together some grant money to kind of bolster that budget, he's very appreciative. We all earn, certainly our patrons, benefit. So thank you, Wells Fargo.
Yes, you're here. Let me totally agree with that.
And the next report, I don't know how accurate the agenda title is, "Library Budget and Staffing." Really, my intent tonight is, especially for the newer members, to show where Daily City is in the region and how we compare in our expenditures for libraries compared to the cities around us. And I think it's really eye-opening, and it gives you a good context, and I know when you're out in the community and people want to know, you know, why aren't you open seven days a week like that in San Francisco? Or, God, why are you only open two days in Bay Shore, three days in John Daly? The short answer to that is, there just simply hasn't been enough funding prioritized for libraries in Daily City going back quite a few years now. And the end result of that is what I'm going to share with you today. Just again, I'm not expecting a lengthy discussion, I just want to put it out there for your benefit, so you have a better understanding of where we are in 2017, as we start getting ready to budget for fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2019, 2020. Daily City does do a two-year budget every, every two years, and so we're entering that cycle, where we're preparing. And the reality is, especially in our department, there are so many fixed costs, from salaries being the main one that any, any city has, with things like, you know, the electricity, the water, the sewer, maintenance, custodial, that's all folded into our budget. So at the end of that process, the amount that we really have discretion over programming is quite small compared to the total. So it's a lot of math exercises we do, getting to the point where, okay, where do we allocate the precious few dollars that we have that aren't part of what we call our fixed charges? So if I could get this to work, did I skip one, or is that the first one? Okay, there we go. Our first one, I wanted to put up there is, and for this purpose, what we're comparing to specifically are the other city municipal libraries in San Mateo County, not those affiliated with the county, like Pacifica, for example. So if you look at the libraries, and I did not bring the numbers, I left the, Daily City is in yellow. I'm, I really messed up, I should have had the hard numbers. So it's a little bit over $3 million for Daily City, for our four libraries. And if you compare that to what some of our neighboring cities are spending, for example, Redwood City is way more than double that. San Mateo and South San Francisco considerably more, and Burlingame quite a bit more. We're on par with Menlo Park and San Bruno. Now, keep in mind, Daily City has the highest population of any city.
I was going to ask if you had a per capita?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to that in a second, too. And I've got copies to share, but I prefer to share it at the end, that way I can keep everyone's attention on the same thing and no one's jumping ahead of me.
Sounds good. Such a teacher.
So that's, that's a startling intro into this, this process. Where are we in spending? Well, pretty much near the bottom. When we get to the per capita, as the president alluded to, we are smack dab at the bottom. So the next thing is, where, where is our library in terms of the percent of the overall budget compared to others? So again, Daily City is hitting right at about 2% of the city's overall budget. About 2% is allocated to the library. There isn't a library in San Mateo County where a lot of the city's budget is going to the library, but if you look at, compared to Burlingame, San Bruno, San Mateo, and Redwood City, well, basically, if you look at it compared to everybody...
Definitely at the rock bottom.
Our slightly, maybe over 2%, is at the rock bottom for the county. And that, too, is not insignificant to look at. Again, you know, we are the largest city in the county, trying to operate four libraries, and we're doing it for less than some of these cities that are operating a single library or two libraries. And we'll get to that in a second, too. Feel free to interrupt me, this is going to go by real quick.
I actually have a question. Based on the other cities, like, for example, South San Francisco and San Mateo and so forth, how many branches do each of those particular cities have? Are we the ones, are we the ones that have the most?
That's coming up.
Okay, that's coming up, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's coming up, and the answer is yes.
Jump the gun on that.
We'll get to that. So where do, we just did the percentage, I lost my place already. Okay, so, oh, the populations are, and this is misleading, too, because this is actual population of the cities. Now, if you don't know, Daily City's libraries also serve Coleman and the unincorporated parts of San Mateo County. And for that, San Mateo County does provide some funding based on that...
Broadmoor also?
Part?
Do we include Broadmoor in there?
Broadmoor is part of unincorporated San Mateo County, yes. So, so our number for population served is actually much higher, this is just the actual city population based on numbers from the State Department of Finance. So we have the highest population served, and we're spending the least amount percentage-wise of the overall budget. Again, we're, San Mateo's close to us, but the rest of the cities, you know, top off at, you know, Redwood City's a smidge over 80,000, South San Francisco in the low 60s, and then, you know, down to Menlo Park and Burlingame and San Bruno are all, you know, 40,000 or so or less. So we're more, for example, more than double San Bruno. And yeah, the favorite statistic of all that Mr. Lex knew we were coming to, and that is, how are we doing per capita? No surprise, based on the track we were getting here, dead last in per capita spending on libraries in Daily City compared to the other cities in San Mateo County.
And is this, again, just the Daily City population?
Daily City population. Just the Daily City population does not factor in, because that would drive it even lower per capita. So based on our actual city population, per capita-wise, we're spending, I want to say about $30 compared to, you know, $130, $130 per capita in Burlingame. And it's not fair to compare, because it's an entirely different kind of community than the Daily City is, but I don't know that it's $100 per capita better or different. So that, to me, is probably the most telling statistic of the ones that I'm sharing with you tonight. Although this one is, is pretty telling, too, and we're leading up to Trusty Devera's comment, too. How many people are we employing in our four libraries? So that, with the unit measurement is full-time equivalent, FTEs, and we're at about 17. And to be honest, it counts a piece of me and a piece of an accountant who never hardly spent any time at all in the library, so the number's actually a little bit lower than that, in my opinion, but, but using the actual numbers that report to the state. San Mateo is doing phenomenal, Redwood City, South San Francisco. And San Bruno does have less than us, as does Menlo Park, and as Trusty Devera astutely pointed out, they don't have four branches, that's, that's the reason. So to have four libraries and 17 full-time employees is really challenging, and that explains why we only have Bay Shore open two days a week and John Daly three days a week. We just don't have the bodies to keep the doors open. And in fact, I'm waiting for the day, it has not happened yet, and, you know, knock on wood, we don't have a bad flu season, but our staff is so thin, so shallow, that if a few people call in sick, we're going to have to make that decision, and it's not unprecedented in the county, it hasn't happened with us yet, but we're going to have to close a branch, because we're not going to have the bodies to keep the doors open. And we do it with bare-bones skeleton crew compared to the average staffing levels in most libraries that you would encounter in this part of the world. And then, yes, the number of branches. So yeah, woo-hoo, Daily City leads. We do lead for the number of branches. We're tied with Redwood City, they're the only other city that has four branches, and San Mateo has three, and one really nice main library, two smaller ones. South San Francisco and Burlingame have two, Menlo Park has two, and yeah, you know, we have more, we have a few more FTEs than San Bruno, but they've got one library, we've got four. So I think that's, that's pretty telling, too.
Because Redwood City has 50 employees.
50 employees.
For four branches.
Joseph, will you have a table on the number of hours of operation?
I don't, and I probably should have included that. We're probably, well, because we have four branches, we're probably comparable to some of the libraries that have two.
Well, I was just wondering, because we have restricted hours, and in a way, even though we have four physical locations, we're not providing full service.
You know, that would be a good data point in here, too, that I don't have.
Would it be possible for you to look at that and just send it out to us by email?
Yeah, and before I go any further, I'm going to take credit for the idea of putting this together, but I have to.
Thanks, Josh.
It came to me when I was, I was actually composing an email to a patron that basically called us out on the number of hours compared to where he came from, I think it was Burlingame or San Mateo. And so to justify it, I started delving into, looking at what the other libraries were spending.
Right.
And I thought, holy cow, no wonder. So I asked Cole to put together the data, and I thank you, Cole, for putting that all together.
Thanks, Cole.
Perfect job.
So yeah, we can certainly add one more and get back to you at our next meeting with just the number of hours that are, that the doors are open for these cities and the libraries. And yet, we don't even think about comparing to San Francisco, because they have 27 libraries open seven days a week. Probably, any single branch there probably matches our overall budget for a year. I may be exaggerating a little bit, but probably not too far off.
Well, they're a charter city, too.
Yeah.
So.
Anna County.
Yes.
And then the last one, I've shared this slide, I think privately with some of you at some point, but part of an explanation, that you see that white line on the bottom that is almost flat, that is library spending historically for Daily City going back to 1978. It's hovered around the $3 million a year mark for quite a long time. And there was a time, if you go back to 1978, we were just about, had the same budget that the Daily City Police Department had 30 years ago. Today, their budget is 10 times greater for police than it is for libraries. So I'm not saying that the Daily City residents value police services 10 times more than they value library services, but the cost of providing police services has jumped significantly. And we're in a, you know, the post-9/11 world, certainly, there's, there's a lot more vigilance, I think, especially in more metropolitan kinds of areas. You know, I, I've been working for cities for a long time, and I remember the Rodney King incident down with LAPD really turned a lot of young men and women off careers in PD, and they were having a hard time across California recruiting. And so one of the ways that they got the recruitment numbers up was the salaries came way up. So entry-level police officers make a lot more than entry-level librarians, and I will say that there is no better educated workforce in the city, and probably most cities, than right in our libraries, you know? Most of our full-time folks, Cole included, have master's degrees in library science or other fields related. You know, you can become a full-time police officer if you made it through high school and have a GED, so.
That's right.
Again, I don't, I'm not...
Library expense, spending going up would probably reduce the PD down, because the more educated and the more, yeah, the less you need that.
Well, and the police get nice bonuses, they get education incentives in their salary, so if they, if they have a degree, a four-year degree, they get a bump, and if they get a master's degree, they get a bump. So there's incentives for them to be educated. So we do have a better educated police force because of those incentives, but in terms of what you need to become a police officer versus the minimum requirements for becoming a librarian, I think the standards, education-wise, are stricter to become librarian. Now, I don't know how our librarians would do on the obstacle course that the PD guys have to go through, but...
So are there other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm going to make a comment, I'm quite shocked by the FTE, so, because I run a branch, right? And I kind of feel it's a little similar. So you're talking about four branches, and then minus Joe, minus an accountant, so that leaves 15 members, right?
And at any given time, you know, we, we have vacancies, because...
Yeah.
The other thing is, our salaries, well, nothing, you know, to make light of, they're, they're not that competitive in the region, so it's not unheard, I mean, I mean, geez, think of the last five years, we've lost some really talented folks to very nearby jurisdictions, San Francisco, Alameda, a couple to San Francisco.
Several to San Francisco, and even if we are paid slightly less, one of the complications is we just have fewer people to do the work that we do, so that's the real challenge, is that while, while we do have an excellent benefits and certainly retirement package, the salary's a bit lower, but if we had more people, we could do a lot more, you know, a lot of things that people are expecting, because we have to wear a lot of hats, you know, I have to be a manager, I have to circulate books, I have to check on bathrooms, you know, so that's one of the real challenges with staffing.
So to your point, yes, I mean, there's, there's, at any given time, about 15 FTEs.
About 15, and then you divide that by four branches.
And we do supplement, we supplement with hourly staff, and we, we could not keep the doors open without, or pages made.
We're a real good training ground for the next step up.
Angela, do you have any other comments?
I was just trying to do the math here.
I was trying to do the math, right? So then you're thinking about maybe two to three members per branch full-time, that's really, yeah, running it thin, and then you think about operations and...
And people get sick, and people go on vacation.
Yeah, so then it's really like, two team members, if you factor all those things.
So how many hourly employees do we have? Are these, would these be like part-time students or...
The full-time salaried folks are the 17-ish.
15, 16, yeah.
I can speak for the Ceremony Library, so it's primarily our full-time people, and then we'll have maybe one person come in who's a page, and they'll work maybe a five-hour shift, with the idea that they're just straightening up and putting materials away. And then we might have, we might have two people that day who do six hours, so they're just doing support, but it's primarily on the operation, operations are done by the full-time staff, so we're not supplemented in a huge way by, by hourly.
Oh, that's really thin.
It is thin. We do have, we did have a pool of three temporary librarians, and we're down to one person now, one temporary librarian who we, I forgot to mention her, so we'll have a page, typically a library assistant who's part-time, then a part-time librarian who's there maybe 15 hours a week, and without her, if she was unable to come in, it will have very, we won't be able to receive any materials coming into our loading dock, because no one's there to answer the door, have the effect of, you know, Chayla can't attend meetings, because she'll be on the desk, I can't participate in committee meetings, there's no possibility of programs happening, because we, you know, we can't leave the desk. So it provides a lot of, you know, we're sort of limited to the very basics, and hourly is not the, is not something that we rely on, but is there to just provide support for, for the full-timers.
So for this upcoming budget, is it possible to request additional staff?
Yes.
Or can we dream?
It is possible, having that, that request granted is...
Let's do one at a time.
The likelihood of that request being granted today, I think, is zero. In fact, we said at the last council meeting, Daily City has, has some problems. We are, we are spending more than we're taking in, and because of that, the city's been dipping into reserves the last few years. At some point, the reserves go away.
Yes.
And then the real problems kick in, like meeting payroll and having money for accounts payable stuff. So I doubt that there is hope of expanding the workforce. That would be my greatest desire, I mean, that would be, that would be fantastic, without something else giving, given, you know, the pie is finite, and we've been, we've been given this little slice of that pie, getting that... Getting that hour slice bigger will come at the expense of some other piece of that pie. So those decisions are made above my level. But, yeah, we certainly advocate, every year, we, we look, in fact, you know, Chayla and I had talked about, you know, putting in extra money for things. We know we're gonna get some expenses related to, you know, computer replacements and, and software and stuff that aren't the same as our last. But so we've got, our budget has to go up, and, you know, we, we're certainly gonna put that stuff in there, and I would, I, believe me, I will, I will advocate, I will beg, I will plead for, for additional positions, but I'm not hopeful that that's gonna happen unless there's some cataclysmic change in the city's overall budget.
May I add something about staffing? We do have a librarian, too, that was formerly staffed by Barbara Daniels, our children's librarian, that allowed us to do a lot of creative and really good things. Her position allowed her to serve as the children's teen librarian for all of our four branches, so she would travel around. But that's also a role that would typically be staffed by someone like herself managing maybe a youth librarian at every branch. So she was able to do a lot of creative things by focusing on doing programs and not the, the day-to-day operations. That allowed us a little bit of flexibility, but she was operating at a department that really could have been three or four other people. So we would have a children's librarian in every branch, talking to children about literature, what do you like to read? Here's the next thing to read, and making those important connections. So that is a right point in the staffing situation. Once that's filled again, we can probably get back to that level.
Yeah, it would be great to have a children's librarian every branch, absolutely.
Other comments or questions?
So when you think of, you know, the libraries being, you know, sparse in staffing, right? They're putting books away, they're doing a lot of operations that greatly affects the experience, right? Of, you know, the community, right? Because they're not able to engage with the people that are in the branches, and where they're not able to engage, you're gonna have less people coming into the branches, right? It's, it's the same thing in banking, right? There's gonna be a manager for operations, and then there's gonna be some people tending to the needs, right?
There's absolutely truth in that.
So.
I think, some people don't wanna engage, some people come to the library for the quiet time, for the computer access. Others do need the assistance, and other people, I suspect we're finding, if you live in the Bay Shore neighborhood.
Yeah.
Trying to remember, was this the day they're opening up? And they just, they go the other side of Geneva and go to Visitation Valley, so they're, they're getting their needs met. I, I think we have really good interaction with the patrons, with the staff.
So there are a lot of the, a lot of the people that are, they're self-starters, right? They, they know what they need to do, so there's not a lot of need to direct, or, oh, wow. Interesting.
I have one last slide.
Okay.
Oh, you have another question?
Well, no, we'll just, we, this is all one big discussion, so I'll just go back.
Okay, I, I just, just this other one, you know, I, I am not gonna tie the amount of library hours to this statistic, but it's one I like to share with people. You came from our second home this evening, and you'll hear them talk about the big lift and the fact that San Mateo County sees some heads nod. In fact, maybe we'll do a refresher on what the big lift is, but here we are in the most affluent county in, in California, one of the most affluent in the world, and the children in this community are suffering. And I took out the names of the schools, but there are some schools in Daly City Public Schools where sixty percent of the third graders are not reading at grade level. They're, they're below grade level. That, that should be a shocking statistic to anyone who hears it, because the problem, they've, they've studied that, they've studied this, they, the, the academic, academicians, that's a hard word to say, people that study these things. And what they've discovered with the long-term, kids that fall behind never catch up. If we cannot bring them to grade level by third grade, it's a struggle for them for the rest of their academic career. And follow them all through grammar school and middle school and high school, and those that go into college. They always have a far more difficult time when they can't get to reading level at third grade. And like I said, I'm, I'm not tying this directly to the number of hours, because a lot of it is, is what happens at home and what's happening at the schools, but there are fewer resources for very young kids. And the fact that, that we didn't have a children's librarian at each branch that could really focus on the needs of the kids and, and get them excited and really energized about reading and, and keeping them going forward.
Right.
So that's just the last, last slide.
Well, you know, the reading part, I mean, twenty years ago, when my daughter was in elementary school, and they were going to a private school, I used to have to take my lunch hour and go tutor their class in reading. It's just that these kids have no interest in reading anymore.
That's part of it, I mean, there's, there's lots of blame.
I mean, they just don't.
And face it, I mean, there are lots of new distractions for kids between the ages of five and eight.
And I think it's worse now than it was twenty years ago.
And I think, you know, we, we've talked about some of the electronic resources that we have that actually works in favor of the kid growing and developing. But, you know, if they're, they're playing other non-educational kinds of games on their iPads or on their Xbox, yeah, that's certainly not, not helping their reading level.
Can I add something that I think that it's really important to be able to offer resources electronically? But a lot of parents come in wanting a break from screen time, because that's how children are interacting with the world. So it is important to be able to offer them that feeling of grabbing a picture book off the shelf or, or discovering a world inside of a book that's really appealing to them and activates their brain, and being able to talk about books or quietly read one to themselves, having the option to be in a safe space devoted to that is really important to successful youth.
That's true.
Okay, well.
That concludes the formal part of the report.
Well, first of all, thank you for a really interesting and informative report, and thank you for putting it together, Cole.
Thank you.
I think what it says to me is that it's so important that we have the support of DCPLA and Wells Fargo. And when I talk about the DCPLA activities, you'll see there are other foundations and grant-awarding organizations that we're trying to cultivate for materials and for other library needs. I'm just wondering if we've explored, or what your opinion would be on, on the possibility of supplementing the staff in some ways to address what you were saying, you wear so many hats, you've got so many responsibilities. You know, would it be possible if there were willing and interested seniors or high school students or college work-study students, where, you know, for a small amount of investment, they get money, they earn money, and it's subsidized by the federal government, unless that's, program's been cut out, that certainly was a program that existed for a long time. You know, to bring some other people in to take a little bit of the burden off and do some of the routine, very easy to address tasks.
I think that one, a few things that we would benefit from is people who can, I mean, it's a simple system to learn, but once they learn the Dewey and the alphabet, alphabetical organization, they can do what's called shelf reading, which is simply seeing if things, spotting things that are out of place, shelf maintenance, even dusting, directing people to how to print or formatting their papers on the computers. So that, that kind of thing would be helpful. Of course, a lot of our work is, deals with confidential records, so, and then we also have, obviously, you know, union interests in keeping certain jobs protected. So anything that involves direct public service is pretty limited. But we could certainly benefit from help in maintaining our facilities and, and directing people how to, how to use the library, and then referring things to staff as, as necessary, so that, that would be very big help. Of course, we'll always be a little bit behind, because we don't have those professional librarians that are able to do these really innovative programs, and, you know, a lot of places, they don't work on the desk. They're planning programs, they're, they're attending conferences and learning the latest best practices and implementing them. And we are limited in that way, but we would, yes, definitely benefit from operational help.
Jim?
And just to add to that, I mean, we've, we've been down this road quite a few times. Don't minimize the, the labor side of this, it's, it's a union shop, and I promise there would be pushback if there was any hint that volunteers were gonna supplant what paid staff are doing.
Well, I would think we would have to start with them, you know, and, and say, can we open a discussion about ways to support the union staff that are working in the libraries today without undercutting the union? Because I know that's a very powerful force.
Very sensitive issue.
But, you know, that maybe is a discussion we should have at some point.
So, and so, so don't underestimate the power of the union, and don't overestimate the desire of people to help. I've shared this story with you, when, when we first reduced hours at Bay Shore, you've heard this story.
Right.
I, I had a community meeting out there, forty-five people showed up, and they were angry, because, yeah, rightfully so, because the hours at the neighborhood library are going down. And they said, well, what, what if we volunteer? We, you wanna volunteer, we'll take volunteers. Who wants to volunteer? Forty-five hands went up, great, a very simple one-page application, we'll sort through and kind of figure it out. When all was said and done, of those forty-five people, every single one of them got an application. Two of them submitted applications, zero of them followed through. One of them withdrew her application, because in, in the time that she applied to be a volunteer, a week later, she got a full-time job, said, you know what, I can't do it now. And the other was somebody who, I won't name, because you know her, said, you know, I am really overwhelmed with all the other volunteer stuff I did, and, and I kind of got caught up in the moment and said I would volunteer, but I just don't have time. So we went from forty-five potential volunteers to zero in about seven days. So we do have volunteers, we have some that have been around a long time, and, and they do very specialized things in the libraries. But in term, there, there's this notion that if we bring in an army of volunteers, everything will be great, and we can be open seven days a week, and, and we're not, not anywhere near that, and I'm, I see you nodding your head.
Well, that's not the notion that I have in mind.
You might not have that notion, I have heard that suggestion repeatedly over the last five years.
Well, and I've heard exactly what you've said, Joseph, repeatedly, and that's not the place to stop. For example, if any member of the board knew of someone who could potentially be interested, if we took the initiative to make them aware of the need and encourage them to explore the possibility, I think the chance of recruiting and getting somebody to do something like that would be enhanced.
And we're absolutely open, we are open to that, we're open to it, and we have applications.
You know, that's not where it should stop.
And, and we get a lot of high school students that, that help out minimally, and a lot of it is because they have service hours.
One, one way that it's really successful is, is these teen volunteers that, that are doing it to fulfill requirements. But they also do it because they're helping at a scheduled event. So we know we're gonna have thirty kids in here, it's going to be crazy, they're gonna help, they're gonna do specific tasks. But it can be frustrating when we have an ongoing relationship with a volunteer, and they come in and they say, I'm here to help with computers, and we don't have a predictable flow of need, so sometimes there's nothing for them to do, and they don't have, if they're there to do a specific task like computer help, if they were maybe trained to do other things, that would be good. But when we don't have a flow, you know, like when we're not overwhelmed, we have other tasks, because we have full access to every responsibility. But it can be challenging to have someone trying to fulfill hours that aren't tied to a program, which, which we're doing a pretty good job of the teen programs, but they don't tend to stay on after they fulfill the requirement, which makes sense, because it's a different audience that you're proposing, is people who have volunteering in mind for, just for the benefit of the community, which is maybe a better longstanding way to build relationships.
One last thought I'd like to just share is the possibility of what we can do relative to the council, which really makes the decision about what happens on the budget. We have turnover in all of the departments in Daly City. Does every single vacancy have to be filled? I'm sure not every single vacancy is filled, but are there choices where perhaps a position could be allowed to remain vacant and resources reallocated to the library? And I'm wondering how aware, directly aware, our council members are, the information that was presented tonight, and whether or not we could ask the council to hold a special meeting, a small study session, where in essence, we're there, and this presentation is made, and we advocate, advocate on behalf of our libraries. That's a thought, I mean, subject to discussion and everyone's interest in moving forward, modifying it, or not doing it. And we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting and come back, so that's a little.
Are there public agencies?
A great idea, you are advocates of the library and the community, and you have the ear of the city council, which the rest of the community doesn't necessarily have.
Well, we may not have the ears, but we can start to try and grab the ears.
It's called the cost savings of not hiring that person, and it can be applicable towards another position. That's what we need.
I've been here twenty-one years, that has happened pretty regularly. And then, you know, the, the staffing gets back up. I, I doubt that, you know, police and fire have stashing staffing issues, although for the first time ever in the twenty-one years I was here, a fire company, an engine company was eliminated, not a station was enclosed, but an engine company was, was eliminated. So that was a huge precedent for Daly City to, to reverse the trend of, I mean, you look at the overall budget, and it's not, it's not a Daly City thing, it's, it's happening, especially in California, especially in the Bay Area. Public safety is taking a bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger chunk of the general fund budget. It used to be, it used to be less than fifty percent.
And that will continue unless somebody speaks up on behalf of the libraries. And we are the ones, you know, that are charged with that responsibility. So anyway, could we put that on the agenda for next meeting? It was a discussion item.
The same, the same topic, or, or meeting, or how, strategies?
Yeah, I think the same topic.
Do you want to present it to Daly City Council?
Well.
The wording and the preciseness of how to.
How the board can be more directly involved in trying to bring this to the attention of the council and rise our, or increase our profile, and try to get them to recognize the, the losses that we have experienced longitudinally for many years, and why this can't be allowed to continue, why it has to be reversed.
I'll try to condense that title, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, library budget and staffing discussion would continue to cover it, we know what we're talking about there. Okay, anything else there before we run through the?
Oh, could I ask a quick question about that, on that subject? If a union position is vacant, does it have to be replaced? Or can that be frozen? Does that?
Does it have to be replaced?
Let's just say, you were just talking, if there's a vacancy.
Let's say.
If it, yeah, a civil service vacancy.
Does it have to be filled before? So it's always gonna be the union has to be replaced before we can, okay.
There are certain positions, there are thirteen bargaining units, I believe, in Daly City. Library staff belongs to ASME, American Federation of School, county municipal employees, if I got that right, something like that. We have, we have Teamsters, police, anyway. So there are positions through civil services, especially tied specifically to those bargaining groups, the unions.
So if an FTE quits, if the library FTE quits, that has to be replaced?
Doesn't have to be replaced, but if it is replaced, it, it's still under the.
Close back to that bargaining unit.
See, what's happened is, is we've lost positions, other departments have either maintained with increasing costs or gained positions.
Oh, if we have, yeah, then I can see the argument. I was not trying to be the depressor, but I just thought the first thing they're gonna bring back is the fire department, the engine, and then they're going to start replacing, that, that's just the way I felt. If we have a chance, definitely, I'm all for it.
That's, well, to his point, that's been the priority, and I think the question, I don't wanna speak for you, but that's fair to ask, is that the community's priority?
And in fact, the community's priority was not to support that when it was put on the ballot.
Right.
That's why.
It's fair. Yeah, I don't have a crystal ball to know how that conversation would go, but I think it's a fair issue to raise. That's part of the reason I shared this information tonight, just to enlighten all of you, where the library stands today.
Well, that was very eye-opening.
Yeah, very eye-opening. I think anyone is aware of that, the fact.
I'm not sure how many people watch us either. Maybe it's something that can go out to the city. Look where we stand, and look what we need, and we need your help.
Well, let's talk about how we want to approach this at the next meeting, come up with some action steps, perhaps meeting with council, perhaps asking for a study session, perhaps attending council meetings and making public statements. You know, there are a number of things that we might come up with, that we begin to address it. Because to do nothing is, we would just be abrogating our responsibility.
I agree.
Okay, so, report from DCPLA. They had their last meeting on October 24th, and they were talking about the upcoming Moonstar fundraiser, which was very successful. I spoke to Susan. She said about seventy were in attendance, including two members of our board who had a very nice time. Also, they're talking about the Cars fundraiser and community event that is still in the planning. Initially, this was described as a soapbox derby. It's, because of insurance concerns and liability issues, turned into more of a pine wood derby, you know, a small thing where kids and dads and moms put together a little car that, you know, races down an inclined plane. They're also talking about combining that with the Classic Cars Festival, having food trucks, getting a beer and wine license perhaps, and they've got a committee that's actively working on that. So that's something that will be coming up, not, I'm not sure if it's in 2018, or if it's a year beyond.
That was 2018.
Yeah, so, more on that as planning continues. DCPLA is looking for some volunteer help to take some of the load off of Susan Brizden Smith's shoulders, and there was a very weighty job description of all of the things that Susan needs to unload. And so there was discussion about whether that should be a paid position, even though they don't have much money, whether they should seek a volunteer to do all of it, whether they should break it down into more manageable chunks and seek several volunteers, and that will come up at the retreat that they're going to be holding, I believe in December. Let's see. The next events, well, meeting was going to be Friday, October 27th, so that's in the past. There are a number of board members whose terms were ending in 2017, and they have all agreed to sign up as board members for an additional term. So that includes people from Colma, from Ceremonial Shopping Center, Bernie Vidalas from Jefferson Elementary School District, really good people, you know, who have made DCPLA work as well as it has, under Susan's direction. The book Dropbox Fund and Need project that they've been working on has been struggling. They applied to the Woodlawn Foundation for additional funding. That was denied. They're going to talk to their board of directors to try and get some feedback as to what was not, you know, of interest to Woodlawn. Also, the Daly City Council Subcommittee was talked about. This is a committee, Subcommittee of the Council, consisting of two council members, including the mayor and Susan, Pat, I've attended. Joseph, do you know who else attends those?
Councilwoman Judith Christensen.
Yes, Judith Christensen. And that Subcommittee has not been meeting because we were trying to accommodate council members' schedules by scheduling those meetings before council members, or before council meetings, and there have been too many study sessions that have just usurped the time, taken over the time, so that that Subcommittee, to discuss some of the issues that we've talked about tonight, but from a different angle, has not been able to meet on. The Project Trivia Challenge team was talked about. That was Mike Pacelli, the famous Tricia Devera, and Paula Stillman, who went and represented DCPLA and our library very well and had a good time.
Did.
The town of Colma, I should say that DCPLA applied for a grant of $2,000 to fund children's books to the town of Colma, and that was approved. So that's great. DCPLA has also applied to Seaton Medical Center for a $5,000 grant. They're awaiting a reply. They're considering revision to the DCPLA bylaws to increase the number of directors, but that decision is on hold for the retreat and for discussion at that time. Joseph and Chayla and I made a library report to the board, and as I recall, that's about it. Joseph, do you have anything to add?
No, that was very thorough. Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
I'd like to just bring up one, yes, please. The scheduled CPLA, that's the California Public Library Advocates, the training, is that scheduled for December 2nd or the 9th?
It's for the 9th, and I was going to include that under announcements and communications.
Okay, okay, sorry, okay. Just wanted to reconfirm the date.
Yeah. So moving right on to announcements and communications, we will, I hope, all be meeting on Saturday, December 9th, from 9:00 to 12:00, at the Ceremonial Community Center Room for Board of Trustees Training with Deborah Doyle.
I already announced I can't make it.
Two more.
Okay. That's right, that's right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll be on my vacation. I'll be on a cruise ship.
That's right. I remember that now. We wanted to get as many as possible, so we appreciate that you're going to be there because you were also, you know, having to stretch to attend.
I apologize, I forgot last meeting. You know, where the day went.
That's all right, that's all right.
I realized, four days later.
Put December 9th, 9:00 to 12:00 on your schedule, and it's on. Good man, good woman. Yeah, just rolls off the tongue. Okay, agenda building for next meeting. We have one item. Are there any other items that board members would like to add?
Nope.
Gosh, so much information.
Anything from the staff?
It's a pretty good item.
Yeah, no, that's a good, so, can you readdress what the actual, what you wrote down, and then I'll make a suggestion, but if it's already covered. What did you, what did you put down for the next meeting? Did we say we were going to revisit...
The library budget.
Library budgets and staffing.
And presenting it to the council?
Well, we're going to discuss that, and we may decide to present it to the council, or if the consensus is that we should approach it in a different way, or, you know, not, then...
Okay, okay, because that's, yeah, a continuing conversation, yeah.
And we'll figure that out. We'll also include the statistic that we didn't get in there about the number of hours open to, I think, just to have a little more fodder for discussion.
Okay. So I think we'll discuss, I guess, the plan of action moving forward at the next meeting.
Yes, come up with action and steps on how to...
Right.
Is that what you're trying to ask?
Yeah, I mean, because when we say we're going to talk about the budget, it's so broad, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a little misleading.
Because now I'm thinking of, like, volunteers and...
It's more, I think, a strategic kind of...
Well, it's vague only in the sense of the agenda title.
Right.
It's, I hope, not too vague in our minds, but, you know, everybody's going to bring a different perspective to it, so I don't want to preempt anyone's thinking or approach. I did have one question about a possible agenda item. When all of the fires were burning in Sonoma and Mendocino and Napa Counties, I know that the libraries were tasked with providing community support. I know that in some cases, because libraries have better, I'll just call them environmental controls, the particulates in the air were less in libraries, and they were opened up. And I'm just wondering if the Daly City libraries are part of any kind of community or emergency plan, or, you know, has anyone thought about our role in that kind of thing? And if so...
Every single Daly City employee under California law is a disaster service worker when disaster strike, Government Code Section 3200, I believe it is. And we do go over that periodically, remind them. They get it in their orientation, and the interesting point you brought up about, in heat waves, sometimes libraries are used as cooling centers. In the fires, they were brought in, you know, for cleaning. We actually discovered that our facilities, especially at John Daly, we had the opposite problem. The intake air was bringing that nasty, smoky, acrid air into the library. We actually had to, as far from the libraries as we were, we had to close down War Memorial one day. It was so bad in there. We had the same phenomenon at Geomona Pool. The way the intake there, it sucked all this smoky air, and it almost condensed it, so it was worse inside than it was outside. That's definitely a discussion we can have with our public works folks about, you know, future capital projects, about having a better filtration system.
For sure.
In the event that we have to deal with something like that, but, and also, we don't, we had, back in June, we had some days where it actually hit 100 degrees in Daly City. Nobody has air conditioning in Daly City, but sometimes the libraries are cooler than sitting in a hot, stifling hothouse. I don't know, anecdotally, maybe Cole can share, if people sought refuge in the libraries to beat the heat. I probably, we'd have better success going to the mall, or somewhere where, you know, the air conditioning is blowing. Because we don't have air conditioning. There's no air conditioning here.
Well, it wasn't so much as specific, you know, can we help if, you know, it gets really smoky again, as much as are Daly City libraries part of any community or city emergency plan?
Absolutely.
So, you know, if there's a massive earthquake, you know, how would the libraries respond to that and that kind of thing?
The libraries, under California, the Government Section Code, I want to say 3200, become disaster service workers at the command of the operations chief. We've practiced scenarios of time to time, and the reality is, the real need in the heat of a disaster, fire, earthquake, flood, is out in the field. So it's public works, guys with backhoes and shovels and that kind of stuff. The librarian folks would be pulled in more into the operations center, answering phones, taking records, and organizing records, and maybe preparing reports and that kind of stuff, not up to their hips in mud.
Well, okay, but I wasn't asking for a response right now, as much as...
I'm telling you, there is a plan, and every employee is part of it.
Can you, let's put that on the agenda then, and sort of present that information in a little more, you know, organized, here's what's going to happen, here's what the facilities would be used for. I mean, it sounds like you're pretty well connected with that information, so I'm hopefully...
I did it for years.
And if it's something you need to take two months for, it can be moved into January, actually, that's another question that I'll bring up in a second, or February. So I'm not trying to rush it, but, you know. So moving beyond that, let's talk about our December meeting.
I have a question about the disaster, just to go back for a second.
We're not, we're not really discussing that as much as...
No problem.
Putting it on the agenda.
Putting it on the agenda, so...
I was just trying to clear a point.
People have to get to dinner, I'm trying to...
Thank you.
Sorry.
No problem.
So...
December 19th would be your next meeting.
December 19th is our next meeting. Who thinks they could be here?
I won't be...
I'll try my best.
I'm going to be in Thailand.
Okay, so it's one down.
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm looking.
Okay, because...
I'm here.
All I can say is that my daughter was supposed to bring her two kids out for Christmas, and she's decided that it's going to work the other way.
Are you flying out that way?
Yeah, leaving the 19th.
Oh, okay.
We have traditionally suspended, carried over the December meeting into January, more years than not, than I've been around.
Sounds good to me.
I would like to be a part of the next meeting's conversation, so if we could postpone it in the best interests of the holidays and then move this discussion to the next meeting.
Are there any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay.
And you should have no guilt at all, because it's tradition. A lot of meetings, and the Recreation Commission is not going to meet in December either.
And speaking of that, will our workshop, or our board training, be noticed since we're all going to be in the same room?
It will have to be under the Brown Act, yes.
Okay, so that will be officially taken care of? Super, thank you.
Okay, so our next meeting will be in January then, right?
Yes, yes, third Tuesday. Okay, any other comments or questions before we adjourn?
January is typically when, you know, the books start for funding, for community development grants. So if you want to list that as an action item on how we apply for those through DCPLA, you know, we want to get, you know, applications for grants in early, as early as January, yeah.
Have you had a chance to connect with Susan Brizden on...
Vaguely, yeah, a little bit, via email, but it's definitely, we should probably meet, yeah.
Okay, well, I think it would be really good if you guys could connect, and I'd be happy to be part of that as well.
Okay.
You know, with respect to your funding cycle, which is very important.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, maybe we can even take it on in early January, you know, and get it on our agendas.
You know, so, we do what we need to do to apply for the grants and just get it in right away, in that way. We're not scrambling.
Can I add to that real quickly, Angela? Sorry. If you do coordinate that with Susan, to have a sit-down meeting, maybe you can announce that through email to us as the board members, and maybe we can actually participate in that and help out in a way.
Absolutely. And, you know, we can provide stats like this, right?
Yeah.
Which I think are very compelling.
Well, Susan doesn't need to. She knows what the need is. As a matter of fact, she was a Board of Trustees member.
Okay.
Yeah, they really understand.
In the good old days, when there was money...
And then, you know...
Right.
Joe's have the foot in the door already, right? Because he's...
Okay, seeing no members of the public to make public comment?
Really short, short announcements.
Yes, please.
Wanted to just remind everybody, because of the Thanksgiving holiday, all four of our branches will be closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay.
And although we're not meeting in December, the city council will meet here on December 11th for the annual reorganization. It's their only and last meeting for 2017. You're all invited to that.
What's the date again, Joseph? The 17th?
Monday, December 11th.
11th, okay.
And it's going to be a big agenda, because it's the only meeting they're having for the month of December, and they only had one meeting in November, so there's a lot of business piling up. I guess, am I missing any highlight stuff?
I think so, thank you.
That's it, okay, thank you. And happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I was going to say, before we adjourn, let me wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a happy holiday.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Since we won't be together again until January.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.